All in favor?
Thank you.
Purchase order requests.
I'll do them this week.
He loves reading the money that goes out there.
Fire EMS, purchaser request for fire EMS, request to pay boundary EMS supplies for two hundred and fifty-four seventy-four. A request to pay fire tech and safety parts and repair hydraulic, two thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and forty-two cents. A request to pay NRS for water rescue equipment, one thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. A request to pay Row Ford for A two maintenance ambulance two for three thousand twenty-two dollars and fifty-three cents.
I make a motion to accept firing EMS pay purchase order requests.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Purchase order request for Parks and Rec, a request to pay Down East Engraving for Parade Trophies, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. A request to pay Matheson for helium tank, two hundred dollars. A request to pay O'Connor for bus parts, three hundred fifty-seven twenty-four. A request to pay RSD Graphics, it's for the lettering for the new Parks and Rec truck, three hundred seventy-five dollars. A request to pay Sleepers Market for beach, yeah, Sleepers Market for beach supplies, one seventy-one sixty-seven. A request to pay Visa for fishing rods, eighty-four twenty-three. A request to pay Visa for extra T-shirts, one thirteen forty-five. A request to pay Visa Fourth of July trophies, three hundred, three hundred thirty-two twenty-eight. A request to pay Visa Fourth of July supplies, hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-three cents. Request to pay Visa entry fee and ice cream, four hundred ninety-three dollars, I'm sorry, four hundred ninety-five dollars. A request to pay Visa Fourth of July grill and supplies, one thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. A request to pay Visa cookout and totes for storage, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty cents. A request to pay Visa picnic at Sevago Lake, three hundred dollars. And a request to pay Visa end of year medals, two hundred twenty-four dollars and fourteen cents.
Make a motion to accept Parks and Rec purchase orders.
I will second that.
Purchase order request municipal complex.
We got to vote.
Sorry.
All in favor? Thank you.
Purchase order request for municipal complex. A request to pay Amazon binder clips, ten dollars fifteen cents. A request to pay Amazon phone case, twenty dollars twenty-eight cents. A request to pay Amazon town manager office desk and chair, five hundred nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. A request to pay Cardinal Electric for light repair here at the Town Hall, three hundred dollars.
Make a motion to accept municipal complex purchase order requests.
I will second that. All in favor? Thank you.
Purchase order request Davis Memorial Library, a request to pay Visa leaf strainers. And a request to pay Amazon office supplies, oh, sorry, totals, one oh four thirty-two for the leaf strainers and fifty-seven thirty-seven for office supplies.
I make a motion to accept the Davis Memorial Library's purchase order requests.
I will second that. All in favor? Thank you.
Purchase order requests for Public Works, a request to pay Allied Equipment hydraulic tank for five hundred and thirty-five dollars. A request to pay LP Murray for thirteen yards of reclaim, three hundred ninety dollars. And a request to pay Visa lawnmower blades, two hundred and forty-one dollars forty-three cents.
I make a request to pay Public Works request, now you've got me thrown off.
I'll second that.
I make a motion, sorry.
All in favor? Thank you.
Purchase order request for Limington Historical Society, a request to pay approved funds from three one twenty twenty-five, one thousand dollars.
I make a motion to accept Limington Historical Society's purchase order request.
Thank you very much. That is a line item in the town office budget that they get, so all in favor?
You going to second that?
Oh, he made a motion, I'll second it, all in favor? Thank you.
Purchase order request Transfer Station, a request to pay Uline bulb boxes for three sixty-nine forty-six.
I make a motion to accept Transfer Station requests.
I'll second that. All in favor? Thank you. That concludes the purchase order requests. Select Board weekly activities. Do we want to talk about what's happened in office today?
Sure.
Our town manager's agenda.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, that's right, I didn't bring you in, thank you, I'm glad you brought it, go right ahead.
Matt is not present today, but it's an agenda for us to go over and kind of work through today. We went and visited a pit, illegal gravel pit operation issue in town here. Myself, David, in code enforcement, went over, took some pictures, took some measurements, and we'll be proceeding with that here in the coming weeks. We went over, reviewed and approved, reviewed and put up for approval the flow chart for the new Public Works layout.
Grill and supplies, one thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. A request to pay Visa cookout and totes for storage, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty cents.
I make a motion to accept Limington Historical Society's purchase order request.
Thank you very much. That is a line item in the town office budget that they get. So, all in favor?
You going to second it?
Oh, he made a motion. I'll second it. All in favor? Thank you.
Purchase order request for municipal complex, a request to pay Amazon binder clips, $10.15. A request to pay Amazon phone case, $20.28. A request to pay Amazon town manager office desk and chair, $519.85. A request to pay Cardinal Electric for light repair here at the town hall, $300.
Make a motion to accept municipal complex purchase order requests.
I will second that. All in favor? Thank you.
Purchase order request Davis Memorial Library, a request to pay Visa leaf strainers and a request to pay Amazon office supplies, oh, sorry, totals, $104.32 for the leaf strainers and $57.37 for office supplies.
I make a motion to accept the Davis Memorial Library's purchase order requests.
I will second that. All in favor?
Purchase order request for Public Works, a request to pay Allied Equipment hydraulic tank for $535. A request to pay LP Murray for 13 yards of reclaim, $390. And a request to pay Visa lawnmower blades, $241.43.
I make a request to pay Public Works. Request, now you've got me thrown off.
I'll second that.
I make a motion, sorry.
All in favor? Thank you.
Purchase order request for Limington Historical Society, a request to pay approved funds from 3-1, 2025, $1,000.
I make a motion to accept Limington Historical Society's purchase order request.
Thank you very much. That is a line item in the town office budget that they get. So, all in favor?
You going to second it?
Oh, he made a motion. I'll second it. All in favor? Thank you.
Purchase order request Transfer Station, a request to pay Uline bulb boxes for $369.46.
I make a motion to accept Transfer Station requests.
I'll second that. All in favor? Thank you. That concludes the purchase order requests. Select Board weekly activities. Do we want to talk about what's happened in office today?
Yeah.
Our town manager's agenda.
Yeah.
Yes. Oh, that's right. I didn't bring you in. Thank you. I'm glad you brought it. Go right ahead.
Matt is not present today, but it's an agenda for us to go over and kind of work through today. We went and visited a pit, illegal gravel pit operation issue in town here. Myself, David, and the code enforcement went over, took some pictures, took some measurements. We'll be proceeding with that here in the coming weeks. We went over, reviewed and approved, reviewed and put up for approval the flow chart for the new Public Works layout.
... Monday evenings at 7:00 PM.
Excellent.
I would just like to mention a shout out to the Bonnie Eagle Girls softball team. I guess I'm being told they won this afternoon, and that moves them into the championship game tomorrow. So, good luck, ladies. And I would just like to mention a shout out to the Bonnie Eagle Girls softball team. I guess I'm being told they won this afternoon, and that moves them into the championship game tomorrow. So, good luck, ladies. And I would just like to mention a shout out to the Bonnie Eagle Girls softball team. I guess I'm being told they won this afternoon, and that moves them into the championship game tomorrow. So, good luck, ladies. And I would just like to mention a shout out to the Bonnie Eagle Girls softball team. I guess I'm being told they won this afternoon, and that moves them into the championship game tomorrow. So, good luck, ladies. And I would just like to mention a shout. I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second your motion.